It is on board meeting October 24, 2017. My name is Mike Inez, I'm chairman. My left, you're right, Mr. Bayes, the vice chair. Board members, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, Mr. Ray Dell, Mr. Himmel. To my right, go left, Art Clark, Ms. Murphy. And the head of inspection services, Mr. Tupin, behind me, right on the other room. If you have a cell phone or pager, can you please put it on silent or vibrate? If anyone's gonna speak tonight, speak loud so everyone can hear you. If anyone's gonna testify tonight, please stand up and take an oath. If anyone is gonna speak tonight, if you think you might speak tonight, please stand up and take an oath. If you think you might speak, take an oath in case you might speak. Good evening.
He's wearing the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth, I hope you got it.
I do.
And a whole business, these are common for variance, finding. The setback requirements, cross street parking, will not result in substantial detriment to the neighborhood, which is why it's probably slang, council. You're supposed to get revised plans.
That's correct.
I haven't got it. Anyone else get them?
Nope.
Unfortunately, they were only provided to me this evening by the engineers. I apologize for that.
Right.
May I call?
Yep, please. Can we put this out for 28? We can all look at this?
Sure.
Do we have a set of plans? Give you time to look at it, walk in with the property against your change. Move this from November 28, please.
Is the chairman, man number Z seventeen dash ninety, when he says upon whom for a variance line, variance of the setback requirement, also parking will not be, not result in substantial detriment to the neighborhood on the premises number two, please, president's laying, soon as I make a motion, we're going to hear it from November twenty eighth.
Second.
On the motion, standing on all favor. Close, some move.
Thank you.
Thank you, council. Case number Z seventeen ninety-one, Matt Holmes, LLC, Robert Matty, manager of Matty Holmes LLC. Three-story residential, thirty-three Oval Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Christopher Harrington. My law office is at twenty-one McGrath Highway, and I represent Robert Matty, the manager of Matty Holmes LLC. Mr. Chairman, this is a request for dimensional variances to construct a four-unit, three-story residential building in the residence C zoning district. The property is located at thirty-three Oval Road. Oval Road is a side street off of Hancock Street, approximately in the area of the stadium, near Central Junior High. This, uh, this property is an eighty-four hundred square foot residential lot. The zoning is residency. And in the residency zoning district, the requirement is to have two thousand square feet of land per unit. And so, this project was designed for four units on eighty-four hundred square feet, which is twenty-one hundred square feet per unit. Residency also allows a six-story building. This is a typical three-story townhouse, which you've seen many of this type before. And the maximum FAR for this neighborhood is one point zero, and our FAR is point seven four. Green space is four hundred square feet per unit, and we have seven hundred and thirty square feet per unit. So we've tried to design a project that is reasonable in size, considering the size of the lot. It's not overburdening to the property or to the neighborhood and have adequate green space and parking. This project is a townhouse, so each unit has two parking spaces down below on the first floor of the unit. In our ordinance, there's an ordinance, there's a footnote that says that projects have to have guest parking, one quarter space per unit, which would mean one space for guest parking. In our case, the parking requirement is one point seven five. Each, each one of the units has an extra quarter space, more than what's required by residency zoning. But because each unit has two spaces on the first floor, there isn't a space designated as designated guest parking. So what we've done is, on the left-hand side of the site, on the side with the garage doors out, we've made a setback on that side, extra deep, with an extra wide driveway. So if there's enough room, if a person comes to visit someone who lives in one of these units, the car could pull up right in front of that person's garage doors, and still enough room up top to get by that car to get to the other units in development. Our project site, site engineering was done by Jim Burke, our civil engineer. I think I'd like to introduce Jim to talk to you about his stormwater management and the work he did on the site plan. Thank you.
Good evening, Jim Burke, for the cell Burke Associates with offices in Quincy. Yeah, eighty-four hundred square foot lot, single-family house with no stormwater run right now, has a pool in the backyard. You know, there's a paved driveway right now that provides, I'd say, two, two spaces for the house right now. We're certainly increasing impervious areas, so what we're proposing is a single catch basin with a deep sump along with a drain manhole with another deep sump, so you'll meet your water quality standard before you recharge into the ground. And we've got five cul-de-sacs in, proposed in a wing formation. You can see the blue underneath the driveway. So, and I have actually had some experience with the soils. We haven't done test pits out here on this particular lot, but we've done some work across the street, and we did some work for the residents, and soils up there are good. So, I'm pretty confident that the stormwater's gonna buffer all storm events. There's zero CFS running off everything from up to a twenty-five year, then it's significantly reduced for a hundred year. As far as on the utilities go, we're providing new domestic fire protection and new soil as well. If you have any questions, we'd like to answer them.
Tonight could be a hundred year.
What's that? Tonight?
Tonight's gonna be a hundred year.
Tonight's gonna be like, you know, half a year.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our presentation. The developer, Robert Matty, is here. If you have any questions for him, he'd be happy to answer them.
What's on the outside of the building? The outside paper here?
Hi, Mike.
Thank you, council. Anybody want to speak in favor? First call?
John Orfels, St. Bruno Road. I am in favor of this project. I was, was at half the neighborhood meeting, I did tape it, so it's up online if anyone wants to see it. There was very little opposition in the neighborhood. Garrison Hughes had a meeting, and it looks like a good project, so I'm for this project. We need good development like this instead of big, tall buildings. Thank you.
Is there anything else, like speaking favor? Second call, third call, call up power, hearing closed, you'll let from the DPW?
Mr. Chairman, we've received the similarity of both reference projects, and our comments are as follows. Grade number one, the engineering department would like to witness the soil test. Number two, the maintenance plan shall be recorded at the Northwood County Registry of Deans. Number three, apply for a stormwater connection permit for this apartment at public works before construction. Four, the proposed infiltration system violates the setback requirements for the building foundation. And five, explain why the primary outflow in the hydroCAD model is broad-crested rectangular weird. What if it that is?
I can answer that.
What is, what is that?
Especially the driveway. So, water spills over the edge.
You ask.
I do that. Water. One, perform water flow test for the city's water department. Two, install a curb stop valve and box on the sidewalk. Three, cut and cap existing water service at the connection with mains. Four, provide calculation to show proposed one-point-five-inch water service, foot, or the service inadequate for four condo units. We recommend two, water service be used. The fire service should be three feet or more away for the domestic service. Sewer, number one, the existing sewer mains and manholes from San Ana Road, Oval Road should be inspected with television and tested for integrity, integrity, pre and post-development. Submit the inspection report for review before any connection. Two, cut and cap the existing sewer service on the backup sidewalk. Three, the new manhole should be installed with a connection with the city's system. General, number one, show landscape area on the plan. Two, require the existing sidewalk department, proposed development, to be reconstructed instead of individual patchwork with utility trenches and driveway entrances. Three, install survey monuments to eliminate the public right-of-way. The monuments should be set by a professional land surveyor. Four, question, is there a curb or curb around the pavement area? Five, all proposed buildings should have house numbers assigned by the engineering department, DPW, before any building permit can be issued. Six, a project has a project, as-built plan showing utilities, building footprints, references, bounds, and benchmarks. Finding the total site facilities and right-of-way need to be submitted along with a digital CAD file, CAD file. As the as-built plan shall be standard signed by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer. Thank you.
All right, private hearing closed. Is there anyone opposed around the side? Opposed around the side, first call, second call? Third call closed. It's nice project, it's nice work, it's been built so far.
I'll give my favor to Mr. Chairman.
Likewise.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question for the council.
Yep.
Could you address the fifteen-foot-wide sewer easement, is that from impact, this project, or?
We've, um, we've just filed with the planning board for cycle and review. So all of the questions that are in Chen's letters from the DPW are gonna be addressed as part of cycle and review. Are you aware of the?
Yeah. No, we're, we're aware of where the soil is, and we've designed it to make sure that we're, we're gonna be protecting it for our construction and, for short term and long term.
Sure. No other questions?
Okay.
On the motion, please?
Thank you.
Just, Chairman.
Man number seventeen dash three, sorry, nine-one, Matty Holmes LLC, Robert Matty, manager for variance, to construct a four-unit, three-story residential development on the premises number thirty-three Oval Road, make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, standing on all favor?
Aye.
Close, some move. Thank you, council. Further wonders tonight, agenda Z seventeen nine five, blown fire appliance, advanced fine, demolished, existing two-family house, constructed two-story addition and expanded parking lot, existing business on premise two eighty-eight, two ninety-two, Wood Street, the afternoon representative there. Council?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, good evening. Christopher Harrington, representing Boron Fire. We're here on a continued public hearing. We met two weeks ago to talk about this project, and I am hoping for the revised landscape plan that I promised you last time I saw you. Just one copy. We'll get the rest of copies.
Can we have a look at this, twenty-eight? Right? Can I look at it two weeks? Oh, I'm not gonna be at twenty-eight? Yeah?
I was wrong.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
Oh, okay. All right.
Me too.
Mr. Franco, he's a board member. He's sitting in this case, he said in the last one. Twenty-eight fifty?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion?
Yeah.
By Z seventeen dash ninety-five, Boron Fire appliance for variance, finding demolished an existing two-family house, and construct a new two-story addition and expanded parking lot on the existing business, on existing business, on premise number two eighty-eight, two ninety-two, Wood Street, Quincy, make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, standing on all favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you, council. And a new business, case number Z seventeen ninety-three. Final last summary, variance to improve the porch in the premise number one forty-six, Center Street. The afternoon representative there. Number one fifty, right?
Yeah, it's one fifty. Same hours, but.
You're trying to find one forty-six, but I seen you porch. And I got it. But you tell us what you want to do.
Well, my porch was in very dead shape, so I wanted, for sometimes I wanted to replace it. And then I was looking left and right, both my neighbors and the closed porches, and that helps a lot because as it is now, my front door is right on the living room, so I look at the door, I'm right on the TV. Going up on the shoes, the clothes, you look at the door, all, all areas is there. So if I close it, it'll help me a lot. Go through, close it on there. And I was thinking, go around the other bathroom on the right, because I have a twenty-four, twenty-five by seven inch.
Is it coming in off the driveway? No. Where's the door gonna be? Where's the door gonna be? On the front porch, where's the door gonna be?
Where the stairs, the front stairs, I, I, now.
Oh, okay. So that's not a great thing.
No, no, not yet, nothing. It's just, I'll close it.
All right. Well, I got you a new block, you put a new block in, you get a permit to stop.
Yes, I got a permit already, I got a permit already to replace the porch as it is, but I'm looking out to a closet.
What are you putting in there, windows?
Two windows, yeah.
How many?
Two.
What's the outside gonna be? It's gonna match the house?
Side, yes.
You have shingles on there, right?
Shingles on the roof.
You have wood shingle from your home?
Side, side.
Inside?
Yeah.
They look like wood shingles.
Nice side, yeah. It's been there since I bought the house, actually.
All right. Glenn is ready. Any questions?
I have none.
Thank you, you can have a seat. Thank you. Is there anyone want to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. I have a letter here, in support from the council, Brian Tommucci's in favor. Call that pilot, hearing closed. I have a letter here from the DPW, they reviewed the above reference project and had no harm. Standing right opposed around the side, first call, second call? Third call closed. On the motion? Wait a minute, maybe they're not. Oh, sorry. They always won't know it. Won't know it.
Mr. Chairman, man number seventeen dash ninety-three, Tomo Lacy, very in variance, look close the front porch of the premises number one forty-six, Center Street, I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, standing on all favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you.
Thank you.
Case number Z seventeen ninety-seven. Li Jun Chen, for variance to construct a new single-family on the existing lot on the premise number fifty-four, fifty-six. One second.
Thank you.
I'll read that for this time. Go ahead, you give me a give.
Mr. Chairman, honorable members for record, my name is attorney Jack Teelover, I'm here this evening for the advocate, Lee Jun Chen. I have put aboard this evening my client's petition for certain dimensional variances pertaining to minimum lot size, minimum lot width, and minimum backyard setback relative to the building of a new single-family home on an existing open lot. What you're seeing this evening is the property owner, Mr. Chen, who's right here, and I have the property architect with me, Mr. Jim Chen. It's my understanding that previously, there was a single-family home on this open lot. It's my understanding that the, the home had become rundown over a period of years as a result of that, my client chose to demolish that home, and it's now her intention to erect a new home in the open lot. Mr. Chen has some plans this evening, I have to give you a brief rundown of the proposal. Mr. Chen.
Thank you, good evening. So just want to show you the original building, the single-family that was there. From, from spring street, it's two and a half stories, but from spring terrace, which is above one level lower, it's, as I said, three and a half stories. So I'm proposing here is, it's the same, same building height, two and a half stories in the front, and actually, three, three stories in the back. Three and a half. Oh, the attic space is sort of, not, not tall enough to be had at all. Could be considered three and a half or whatever.
Can I just ask one question, because I'm already confused. The rest of the space is the ocean, or does it face the ocean?
Well, the wall, facing, facing the wall.
The wall, that's in the back, that's where the, all the, all the rock is coming up that area.
That's what. And we have four bedrooms and two and a half beds.
How many bedrooms?
Three on the second floor, one on, one on the first floor.
One on the basement.
And there's another one in the basement. The owner's considering giving that to the son, who typically comes home.
Well, it's, to me, it looks like a separate unit completely. They're full bath down there, and you could turn that into a, a apartment in two minutes.
Right, but there's no way to enter this level from, from up top, other than passing through the first floor. And we're closing the deck right here, inside, what they got uncovered over. Apparently, we're showing three parking spots.
Why didn't you build a house with, with a garage under, and a house on top? Say, rock street park, and you're out of the way.
Yeah, well, what?
You want to build this monstrosity down that little lot, really? I got a letter here from the council that says, it's so big, you said you want to build a building that big. She called me today and said, I'm gonna hear the hearing tonight because I want to see this plan, maybe they did something different, but that is gigantic for that lot. It's all ledge. You've got a lot of work to do on that lot. Ton of work to do on that lot.
The owner hired an expert here to pick up the study.
When, when was it cleaned up? I was there today and, and last week, and still, it's not clean. People are gonna get hurt in that lot, is what's gonna happen. Kids are gonna get hurt in that lot. There's a big giant cliff to fall right off. So someone's there, they should have put something up. Little kids are all running over there, little kids. Big kids know that, little kids don't. You can run right off the end of that lot. And I'm saying, I think you'd be smart, and save a lot of time, if you went back and built a better building than you got there. That's just my opinion, because I personally, I would never do that, and I don't know how, who else saw that lot, looking at this building and house neck, it doesn't belong, just don't. I'm just trying to help you out here, but. You want to go through the whole thing, we'll go through the whole thing. You want to postpone it, come back with a different plan, maybe something that might fit that neighborhood? Kind of help you, council.
No, I understand, I appreciate that. My understanding, from having spoken to the council, is she had a concern about this being a two-family or one-family with an in-law, that's not the.
That's not the issue, I, I.
Yeah. And I know, I know she, because I spoke to her, she had an issue about that.
Yeah, and then I talked to her today.
Right. And there's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be an unoccupied home. But certainly, we can take into consideration comments I've made this evening, if we can come back.
I just think, especially down there, wouldn't you want a nice garage under? Where you could pull two cars off the street and not care with two feet of snow, and you gotta bring it home. Why not build it so it's livable? Instead of going outside for two hours and scraping off snow and doing all that stuff. Ice, salt water, you got, you know, yes.
Maybe continue for four weeks.
You got twenty-eight. Yeah. Is there anyone here for this case? All right.
Far against.
No, I'm not asking that, I'm just, you're here to speak. We're gonna do this to twenty-eight, but they're gonna come back with a new set of plans within a couple of weeks, we'll have, before.
Thank you.
And what I understand is, through the council, no one wants that big giant building. So, saying that with a letter, and I will say, the letter says, you're definitely in opposed to this project, it's too big for three thousand feet of living space, and, and I totally agree, and it seems like the board totally agrees, that it's, it's just too big of a piece for a small lot like that to have that monstrosity of a house. So they're gonna come back, we'll all meet here November twenty-eighth. Does that work for everybody?
Yes.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please, thank you, council.
Man number seventeen dash five seven, Luke Jun Chen, for variance, for the single-family home on the existing lot, premise number fifty-four dash fifty-six, Spring Street, make a motion to continue the hearing for November twenty.
Is that seconded?
Second.
On the motion, standing on all favor?
Aye.
Close, some move. Looks like they're all here for fifty-four. Let's just move on to one point. I mean, one point. Z seventeen ninety-nine, Gabriel Holmes, for variance, special permit, flood plan to subdivide the existing lot and construct a single-family home on the newly-created lot on premise one twenty, Spring Street, council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Edward Fleming. I'm here on behalf of Gabriel Holmes Company, Mr. Gary Gabriel, who's joined me tonight, regarding the proposal at one twenty, Spring Street. Mr. Chairman, this is a, this is a matter that Mr. Gabriel has entered into an agreement with Mary Allen and Josephine Matt. Mary Allen and Josephine on the property at one twenty, Spring Street. Mary lost her husband a couple of years ago and looked at opportunities to be able to stay in the neighborhood. And so she decided that the best way that she could do so is look at opportunities to possibly subdivide her parcel for the purposes of giving her some income, some money that she could then utilize to maintain and, and, and buy another home. She was having a difficult time maintaining the large yard that she had in the property, and therefore decided that this would be the best way that she could, to try to move forward and stay in the neighborhood that she'd been for thirty years. So she entered into an agreement with Mr. Gabriel for the purposes of looking at the possibility of, of moving forward with the subdivision of the parcel. She initially came to see me to attempt to do so herself, however, didn't have the money available to really move forward with the process, nor the expertise to do so. So that's when she decided to move forward with selling, or trying to sell the, the property. And she entered into an agreement with Mr. Gabriel because he has quite a bit of experience on a number of projects within the city of Quincy, and has actually been very well-received by the communities that he's worked in. The property at one twenty, Spring Street, unlike all of the other properties in that neighborhood, is a ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine script for parcel. And I want to give you a little background about how a lot of these parcels were created. I know, Mr. Chairman, you're very familiar with house neck and how that, how that was split up. But this particular neighborhood in nineteen oh seven was subdivided and created by a plan done in nineteen oh seven. Right, yeah, when you were around. If, on that plan, the neighborhood was created with twenty-seven hundred square foot lots. And in nineteen ten, in nineteen ten, the home that Miss Matt lives in was constructed on one of those parcels, one twenty-seven hundred square foot parcel. And, and, and the history is, is that many houses were constructed on those same-sized parcels throughout the, throughout the neighborhood on Spring Street. But what happened with this particular property is that over the years, the owner of that home had bought other parcels next, next to them, and created, over time, a four-lot and created, over time, a four-lot parcel. That parcel initially consisted of lots 48, 49, 50, and 51 on the original subdivision plan in 1907. But as I said, the house was built in 1910 on that one parcel, parcel 48. So now, when you look at the parcel, that's about 11,000 square feet, the home is built to the far left of the parcel, only 2.87 feet from the left side of the property line. And the remaining parcel is undeveloped. And over the years, it was utilized to store a boat, to store other things, and it was used for a garden during the Madden's time of ownership. But she's really been unable to maintain that to date. So she looked at the possibility of moving forward with this proposal. When she brought it to my attention, and then I met with Mr. Gabriel, and because I don't typically take these types of matters on, we looked at the neighborhood to really analyze, does this make sense in this neighborhood? Because it doesn't make sense in every neighborhood to create 5,000 square foot parcels. But in this particular neighborhood, it made all the sense in the world. It was a very reasonable proposal because of the history of the site and the way in which the first, the house was built on the property. And as I said, the whole neighborhood consists of properties, lots that are about 2,700 square feet, ranging in a range of up to 7,700 square feet, with an average of about 4,000, 5,000 square feet. So the proposal that's being presented to you tonight is to subdivide the 10,879 square foot parcel and to create two lots. One lot for the home that's existing on the site right now, which will be 5,319 square feet. And a second parcel, which Mr. Gabriel is seeking to build a new home on, which will be 5,560 square feet. Again, bigger than all the other lots and many of the other lots in the neighborhood. The new home will consist of two and a half stories in height. There will be three bedrooms and one and one-half bathrooms. I would suggest to you, when I spoke with Mr. Gabriel, and I knew that he would do this in designing this house, that this house is designed appropriately for the 5,500 square foot site. It's a 1,500 square foot home. It's not a 2,500 square foot home. It's not a large home. It's a very modest, nice, three-bedroom home in the neighborhood. It will also be built in accordance with the floodplain regulations in that the first-floor living area will be above the floodplain. This site's an interesting floodplain site because it slopes down to the salt marsh in the back. And that's where the drainage will go at the end of the day. It's a coastal storm-flowage floodplain, there's no compensatory storage needed, and the water will not interfere with any other neighboring property because the water will flow into the salt marsh. And interestingly enough, the floodplain is only in the back of the site. It's not, it doesn't affect the front of the site. So the building that's going to be built on the site is actually shifted forward, much like all the other homes in that neighborhood, some of which are almost on the street. This house will be set back about 10 feet from the street to provide a front yard. And it will also provide for a driveway. In speaking with the counselor, who I know submitted a letter, she talked about her concern, and her concern was generally that there was a lot of neighborhood opposition, many of the neighbors who were here tonight. Their concern about any more subdivision of lots in the neighborhood. And I understand where they're coming from. But she also said her primary concern, too, was that she didn't want parking of cars in the street because the street is so congested. So she asked that we talk about and look at the possibility of redesigning the driveway so that we could provide for side-by-side parking. And I spoke with Mr. Gabriel tonight, and although the driveway is a narrow driveway now, he can shift the house a little to the right, and he can create a better driveway that will provide for side-by-side parking to ensure, to ensure that the two cars that will be utilized by this home will be off the street and parked in the driveway. It will not be parked in the street to further congest the neighborhood. I understand the concerns of the neighbors and neighbors. And I, there'll be, this talks about hardship, and I believe that there are hardships related to the soil conditions and the floodplain characteristics of the lot. But I think that what I'm asking the board to consider most importantly tonight is, is this a reasonable proposal for this neighborhood? Does it meet the characteristics of the neighborhood? Are the lot sizes that are being proposed appropriate, reasonable in light of the other lots in the neighborhood? And is the house that's being designed for the site reasonable for the size? I would suggest to you that all of those answers are yes. Yes, the characteristics of the neighborhood show that this is a reasonable proposal. The lot size being proposed are reasonable, 5,300 and 5,500 square feet. And the home that's being constructed at 1,500 square feet is a reasonably sized home. No one wants change in their neighborhood, I understand that. But I also would ask you, but also the neighbors, to consider, do they benefit from a smaller lot? And is what is being proposed tonight reasonable and consistent with what they have? And I think the answer is our yes. So that's our presentation tonight. I think the house is what it is. I mean, you have the house plan that I think is part of your package. I don't need to go through that in detail. I think the floodplain issues, as I said, are really primarily focused on the back of the property. We did appear before the Conservation Commission on October 4th. However, they asked that we address this board first and seek the permission of this board before they would vote on it. And we've continued that, and we'll go back to the Conservation Commission to get an order of conditions. But that's our presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Council, who lives in that house?
Mary Madden and Josephine Matt, her daughter, who's a nurse at...
And how old are they?
I think Mary's probably in her early 70s, and Josephine is an adult, young adult, probably in her 20s. She's a nurse.
Why don't anyone take care of that property?
I think that's the struggle that she's having, I really do. I think that's the struggle that she's having. And why don't, I can't answer the other question.
It's a struggle when I drive by here all the time, Spring Street, when we get light in our city and there's people that just know people and certain people and say, "Not this one, not one, and this one." I just get so frustrated that you get a piece of property, an owner, that knows this is coming up, and yeah, it still looks like shit.
Well, I think she's, I can't... I can't answer why she doesn't get out there and do it herself. I think physically, 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 I don't know that she, physically, I don't know that she has the ability to do so. I know that she's not here tonight because she has glaucoma, because she can't drive. Her daughter is working, so she couldn't come in tonight. But she, but I think, so I think she has some physical limitations.
But there's some kids in the neighborhood, there's people that can help her. His neighbors that will help you if you ask them.
I think she's, I talked with Mary a lot about that.
No, it's frustrating to the neighborhood. And I drive around there, and who gets the calls when there's properties? This is going to become funny in a year or two, keep an eye on it, and I do. And that's what we get. But if someone's going to do that, it's like, take care of your own property first. Now we're going to build another house there, who's going to buy that? Look at the other house.
Well, I think she's going to have a neighbor now that's going to be demanding of her as well. And I think that Mr. Gabriel will do a beautiful job on the home.
I know he will. I know he does beautiful work. I just, I want to know what the house will go for when your neighbors, you've got to look at that, real.
I understand, I hear you.
You know, maybe we need a total package, like, get that money and include this new house and a little upgrade to the other house, and yeah, and put one big package together, and that'd be a lot happening.
I think she definitely intends to do that. She told me. The part of it is to raise money so that she can have some money to do the things that she wants to with her home because she hasn't been able to do the maintenance that she wants to do.
And a guy saying he's going to live there with his daughter, and this is, and this is why I'm subdividing, and two weeks later, this house up for sale.
No, she's not going, she told me she's not going anywhere.
Because she's in there under oath, and tell me they're going to live in the house. And then three months later, it's for sale. She goes, "Oh, we decided to get another place."
She's not doing, she's not doing this to minimize the return on her home. She's doing it to be able to stay there.
But I think you come up, your clients, it's not you, it's your clients. They come up, any of your clients come up and ask for something when they don't do the right thing for the neighborhood. And that's why there's probably 50 people here that are angry. You want something from us, but you won't even clean up the yard. We've got to look at it all the time. Look to here and continue. I'm just letting you know my feeling.
I hear you.
It's frustrating.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Counsel, I like the idea of the history of the neck and the size of the lot being very small. But when they developed these plans back in the early 1900s, the people living, buying these plots were people from Boston using it for a second home. Now, they're colleges, and that's why this is so small now. You're asking us to go back to the college days and put... And you're asking us to give you variants when Manhattan, now they have two conforming lots. And I don't think we could do that.
May I should respond to that?
Yes, please.
It's not going back to 2,700 square feet that were created, I...
No, I'm not saying it's creating lots that are over 5,000 square feet. Now, I was here just before this border, for Batock Street, where we created two 5,000 square foot lots. The point that I'm making is that it's reasonable in some neighborhoods. This is not a proposal that's done in every neighborhood, I agree, or every street. But this, this particular home, this particular lot, is far bigger than all the other lots in the neighborhood. It's the only one. That's why I have this plan here, because it shows the size of this parcel. Counsel, isn't that also telling me that this is a unique lot? You're not even making it, it's not going to be the same as everyone else's lot. Everyone else's lot is tiny. So it's not even working that way for me. It's not working that way because, you know, maybe in the past, we've given 5,000 square feet lots as a, to be the right thing holder of pride, and two bits each one of these neighborhoods. And this is a really tiny, congested neighborhood. I do know, that's what I'm saying.
My questions.
Any questions?
No questions, don't worry about it. Thank you.
Mr. Ray Millery, questions? Nope. So anyone want to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor, first call, second call? Third call, close. Everybody from the D.C.?
We review the similarity of both reference projects on comments or responses. One, specify how much imperturbator would be increased due to the development. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utility, grading drainage, and construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, install survey monuments to eliminate the public right-of-way. The monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Five, provide preventions and grades for the paving area and all driveway entrances. Six, upon the future of the project, as the plan shows on utilities, building footprints, reference grounds, and benchmarks, eliminate the total site facilities and right-of-way need to be submitted, and one with additional file. Yes, no plans shall be set on this site by a professional land surveyor or professional engineer.
All that, power, the hearing closed. Now you can speak. Anyone that closes on the side? And if you could, just please, come on up, everybody, line right up, and we can just, one at a time. Please keep a couple up here at a time, at least, so you don't have to... Keep on, you have the four minutes.
Kathy Shaw, Kathleen Shaw. I live at 97 Bird Street. My mother's home is 128 Spring Street, directly abutting the property that's here. I liked your presentation, Ed, but you did leave out a few things that had to do with those lots. If you look back on the history of those lots, yes, they were all created as either 30-foot, 25-foot lots. They were even created in the marsh that's there. So as house neck being a summer place, they were two bedrooms, maybe? Outhouses, probably? If you go on the history of this one piece of property, back in, as far back as I could go so far, in 1946, three of those lots were combined. Lot 48, 49, and 50. Those three lots were always together. Back in 1959, the city took that property, took Lot 51 for back taxes. They then proceeded to sell it to Mr. and Mrs. Johnson, who owned the other three lots. Mr. and Mrs. Johnson incorporated that Lot 51 into their deed. So that's how all four lots became one. That Lot 51 never had a home on it. That Lot 51 was used for car storage for a while. It was used as a horse area. It was used for tree houses when I was little. So that piece of property has never had anything on it. Back in 1999, I think it was, the same petitioner was coming before this board for the same variance to try and subdivide that lot. I do not believe the city of Quincy should be subdividing any lots into smaller lots than what our ordinance reads because, as all of you know, we are on top of each other. A fire starts, the next house is gone. This house, as it stands now, the fence is actually past my mother's house. My mother has maybe four feet?
About 1.2.
1.2 feet, thank you. 1.2 feet between that property line and her house where her house starts. I don't see anything that says what the height of this house is going to be. So she's going to have to go to the floodplain. The floodplain in that area is going to be, is 12 feet. So it doesn't give us any height as to how high that house is going to go. She already has problems with squirrels coming in over the house. Now she's going to have problems with next door to this. She's not going to have any light at all on that side of the house coming in if this house goes up. She has, her lot is 30 by 30, I think by 30. She has a pretty good-sized lot, but her house has the same situation. It is built right up abuts, like Mrs. Madden's house, abuts the next-door property. Other houses were built in the, in the area, fairly new. They were required to have setbacks, according to the zoning laws at that time, the front setbacks. This is only using a 10-foot front setback when the setback is supposed to be, what, 25 feet? So I think they're skirting all of the issues of zoning, and I think it sets a very bad precedent if this zoning board goes ahead and starts making 5,000 square foot lots, not even 6,000 square foot lots, when our zoning code says 76, 7650, I think it is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Whoa, 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 whoa. Speak.
My name is Paul Bythrum. I reside at 134 Spring Street. Bythrum, Paul Bythrum. Kathy just stole some of my points, unfortunately. Back in 1986, I built a house on a lot beside my mother, which there was a house there previously. I had to abide by all the setbacks, the 25, the 13, the 13, and the 20. The house beside me, David's, is the same thing 10 years before that. So I'm involved in abiding by the rules, you know? And also, I think I can only recall 1,2700-foot square foot lot on Spring Street currently. And that's where there is what was a cottage that is converted now. It's not more than one. I don't know where that information came from. Also, as my sister said, she said 1999. I was looking at the subdivision plan, and that was 2003, I think, on the subdivision plan, when the original proposal was done, the subdivision. Mr. Madden was still alive back then. I hate to, you know, I mean, I don't want to say that it's not a hardship, but he was alive back then. They were talking about doing it back then. So it's been around for a long time. They just see an opportunity, probably with the prices in land right now. It's a great time for them, obviously, to do that and make some money. Whether they need it or not, I'm not sure. That's about all I have to say.
I understand you signed a petition.
I did.
You still want to speak, okay.
Yes, we handed in a petition with close to 40 names on it.
There you go, I have it right here.
Yeah, which my mother, an 83-year-old mother gathered today while she was out in the street, plowing down people as they were coming by. So, I mean, it's very important to her. She's been in her house for, how long, what? 60-something years?
63 years on Spring Street.
Yes, 63 years on Spring Street. Oh, she's been in the house for 60 years without somebody within 15 feet of the side of her. So I think that should hold some consideration. Thank you.
My name is Mike Smiglin. My wife and I, Jane, live across the street, directly opposite this lot. My concerns are both of personal and reasoned. Personally, in the sense that I don't want to see more congestion on the street. We already have problems with parking, snowy rule. And families have events that causes an extra parking problem. But on a more reasoned level, when I bought the house, and you know, you look around the neighborhood when you buy a house, and then you go and you look at the zoning laws that were in place at the time, and you say, "Oh, well, look, this looks like all they're going to build here." And then, what you do if you subdivide this lot, you take from this conforming lot... And then, what you do if you subdivide this lot, you take from this conforming lot, turning it into two non-conforming lots, and now you open the whole, you change the whole ballgame, not only do you undermine the, you know, zoning laws. Now, within 1,000 feet of that lot that we're gonna make, we have many 25-foot lots that could be built on. I mean, how do you deny that? And then, the neighborhood really looks like it's all jammed in, you get a wall of houses. And from 120 Spring Street all the way west to the other end, I mean, it is just so congested. And we don't want our end of the street, if you can use it like that, to get more congested than it is. And that's my main opposition to this. In terms of the hardship, I have nothing against the family. It's nothing personal. But I think in law, and I'm not a lawyer, the hardship has to be relative to the lot in question. And there's nothing about this lot that's different than any lot on that side of the street. The soil, the topography, the shape of the lot, they're all the same as the other lots. So, I mean, I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Shmuel, here's an email you want us to read, I'm not gonna read it since you spoke. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Fiona Durkin. I live at 113 Spring Street, which is directly across the street from 120. I can speak to how it is right now, living across the street from there. They don't park in their driveway, just one of their cars parks in the driveway. They park along the street. They park where they're proposing to put a house right now. So where they're gonna park, if they can no longer park in front of that house, they're gonna start parking, lining down the street.
How many cars are there?
There's two that live, well, actually, there's three people living there now, so there's three cars. There's frequently two or three more there, frequently.
I heard there's two. Who's the third?
There's some kid, I think he's living in the caravan at the back. I see him there every single day, so pretty sure he's living there. He's there every day. I think they have a caravan in the back. He's about 23, 24.
Got a couple more, huh?
Yes. But they definitely are, they're not parking, like, they're not using their driveway. They usually have, like, clutter in there or something. But they park along the street, they're parking where they're proposing to put a house. So, and we're already, when they do park there, the cars can't get out of their driveways. You know, so for practical reasons, you can't put a house there because they're not even following the rules they're proposing. So that's my main reason, because there's just too much congestion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Corwin. My name's Victor Davidson. I live at 140 Spring Street, next to the Bythrows. I'm against this proposal. I heard the attorney mention financial hardship. I don't think financial hardship is a basis for this type of variance, to split a lot to get money so she can do other things. There's other ways to get financial support, and this, I don't believe, is a valid reason. That lot has been a junk lot for at least two and a half decades that I can recall. I go by it every single day, and it's sad to look at. It's a mess. And they've had all kinds of stuff there, trailers. It's just a bad image for Hausneck and a bad image for Spring Street. I agree with everything that's been said up to now. I just don't see the basis for dividing this lot. If there's a financial hardship, I could think of two or three other ways to solve that, one of which have her sell the entire lot and move into a condo or some other smaller type home. And maybe someone could build a beautiful house on the entire lot as opposed to trying to stick one in close to the next-door neighbor with a crazy driveway that doesn't make sense on Spring Street. So I don't think there's a good basis for this variance, and I oppose it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Gail Davidson. I live at 140 Spring Street, right next to Paul and Beth Bythrum, who are adjacent to Benny's house. And since we moved into our house about 30 years ago, the traffic on Spring Street has increased exponentially. And I think just subdividing another lot, putting another house there, not only thinking of the impact on the marsh, I mean, the marsh is one of our sacred areas in Quincy. I mean, we wanna protect that as much as we can. Adding extra congestion, more housing, more people on the street on that lot, it's just crazy. And again, you know, the fact that Josephine doesn't keep the lot up is one thing, but that doesn't really have anything to do with adding another house on the same street where it is really congested. I just wanna blow my opposition.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Carol Dunne, summer resident of 50 Spring Street. We've been in those cottages that were over 100 years, I think. I'm opposed to the subdivision because my other neighbors down the other end, they're against it. And it's too congested. We can't even park in front of our cottage because the street's too crowded. We understand that. To put more houses in that neighborhood with no place to park is wrong. So I am against subdividing that lot.
Thank you. Second call?
John Rodafell, 62 Brown Wall Road. I just wanna, I wanna go over what the residential A zoning rules are. 7,650 square feet is what you need to have a residential A lot.
We know the rules.
So unless they have that, and you also need 85 feet of frontage. So unless you have 85 feet of frontage and you have 7,650 square feet, you can't even make... That's why we do have zoning rules. Some people are confused on what the rules are. And one of the reasons why people are coming up here and asking to do something which you cannot do, which nobody in the neighborhood wants, is because someone's been watching my videos of this happening in the past. This should stop right now, okay? You should just deny this right now. This should not be continued, okay? These people should not have to come back here. They have to come back from Spring Street. I wish they could've spoke on the first Spring Street project. And I could've spoken in the first Spring Street project, 'cause I'm against that one too.
Do you know where Spring Street is, Ken?
Spring Street is, and I'm not even...
I just wanna, I just wanna know where.
It's in the city of Coindale. You know what I'm saying? And I mean, I can see it from the map, and I can see that, you know, the way that the registry of deeds were in the 1800s, okay, is what we're going towards. We're not all little children here. We're adults. And the mayor put everyone on here to represent the people. And the people do not want non-conforming lots. I mean, I'm gonna have the city councilors say, hey, well, you make an ordinance that say you cannot subdivide a lot into a lot that is below the minimum zoning code. And then, I'm not sure if you would still be able to give that a hearing.
John, John, no, no, no. Let him speak, let him speak, let him speak. John, finish up, please.
Okay, well, I mean, you know, just on another side note, there's a Ward 1 debate going on right now, and both Dave McCarthy and Joe Murphy, one of the two who will be the Ward 1 councilors, are not in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
I did.
I have a petition here which some of you already spoke, and I didn't cross your names off, I just left the whole, there's 38 names, so. It was probably 30 that didn't speak that are on this list. And I have a letter here from the council, 120 Spring Street. It's just down the street. Well, most of the homes in Hausneck were constructed prior to zoning. Many of the lots are under settled by today's standard. The app can propose to subdivide the existing 10,879 into 5319 and the second parcel 5560. Advantage would make the existing home non-conformal. I appreciate the value of Hausneck and the land and the desire for new housing as a councillor. I supported the determination of 7650 square feet as a durable lot. We, you know, elected officials, made a policy decision. The zoning board, soil and topography, the application does not meet those standards. The area is tightly congested already, yeah? Would rather have no more parking on the street, the second vehicle is always on the street. I've spoken with my neighbors, opposed to this. Project's in a floodplain. We need to limit floodplain development in particular. I've emailed letters to the area, rather than my, for our council board. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? All that part of the hearing closed? Even though, I really think that home might help that neighborhood because it'll clean up that mess that's up there. Then maybe they'd be in charge to do something with their property. The way it is now, no, I just, Spring Street, oh my God. I went to park there while I walked the properties up there. And I had to, like, help a guy go by my car, and I was right against the bushes, so it's like, it's nasty up there. Parking, it's just, people have no parking. You add a couple more spaces, those couple more spaces with three bedrooms, you're gonna have five more cars. It's just, it's not a place to subdivide. It really isn't. It's just, you know, I just can't be in favor of this project. It's just too, too much. And you know, the people that own that place didn't show us nothing the last 10 years. Maybe it's good to the neighborhoods, so I don't feel like being good to people that aren't good to their neighbors.
I think it's just way, it's really a unique street, so far as it is so tight there. And I'm happy to see someone who actually calls it a cottage because that's what they do. And I'd be going against it.
Same feelings, likewise.
I'm not in favor of turning back the ends of time on those reds. It's two heads for me. You're going against it. Grab the board. On withdrawal prejudice, you want to speak?
I, well, you know, since Miss Madden's not here, I think, just out of respect for her, I would request the opportunity of withdrawal of our prejudice. I don't anticipate that she's gonna be coming back at any time in the near future on this, and she's gonna have to make decisions, new decisions on how she's gonna move forward. So if I may.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a man of 17-99 Gabriel Holmes for a variance, special term in floodplain, to subdivide the existing lot and construct a single-family home on newly created lot in terms of 120 Spring Street, make motion to withdraw the withdrawal prejudice.
Second? On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
I agree.
Opposed? Some more? Thank you, Senator. Take two minutes to do that last question.
Yeah, they're tough up there, aren't they?
Last page, Gina Rich Ketti for a variance to construct dormers for individual living space in the premise 10 Sherwood. The app can represent a gift. Name and address, direct question.
Gina Rich Ketti, 10 Sherwood.
Tell a board what you'd like to do.
Right now, we, my parents originally owned, originally two family. My parents had bought back in 95. And when my husband and I got married, we went to the one side that we're in now. And then we moved to North Carolina for a while. And then we came back once we had our daughter and to help my mother with my grandmother. And since then, my grandmother has passed, and my husband has still worked with the same company, so he works from home. So it's a three-bedroom, one and a half bath. And since then, we've had a little guy, we have a two-year-old. So we've gotten kind of tight because we have a bedroom, my daughter has a bedroom, and then the third bedroom is office by day, and then my little guy's bedroom at night. So we thought we were gonna have to move to give us either an office space or another bedroom. Well, we don't really want to because my parents live next door, you know? And, you know, we took, we were born and raised in Quincy. His parents are down the street in Marymount, and my brother lives up the street. My other brother lives in Marina, so we kinda wanna stay. And now that my daughter's 12, she's just from, she lives there in Quincy. She doesn't wanna live central and, you know, so forth. So we're trying to make some more space, livable space. So we're trying to, we have a lot of, you know, space up in the attic that we're trying to make a bedroom and a bathroom for us and an office space. So that way, he can work from home, we'll have some, my little guy can have his own room. It's not an office and a bedroom at the same time. And then we can stay, you know, next to my parents and, you know, and his parents not have to live in Quincy because we've always, although him and I lived in North Carolina, we were born and raised in Quincy. We don't really wanna go, so.
So you get the attic, because you get the second floor?
We, huh?
You have the second floor?
We have a second floor.
So you get the attic?
We get the attic. Kim and I get the attic.
It's in the condo.
It's actually a duplex, so you've got both sides having attic?
They both, yeah.
It's a side-by-side which you turn into condos?
Correct.
Oh, all right.
Correct.
So you wanna blow out just one side of the house?
Yeah, 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 yeah. And my parents, yeah, my parents aren't doing anything, so it's just us.
And the big dormer would be facing, like, Montelio's, the back of Montelio's? You work at home?
Yes.
Do you smell Montelio's?
Oh, it smells sweet.
Hear them smell?
Well, and then when it was...
Discipline pervades.
Well, then, to that scene, when it was 7/11 out, it smelled of bread cooking in the morning. I mean, you get about 30.
Dairy breeze.
Yeah, dairy breeze.
It's the increase in space up there. What do you increase it to?
Say anything else, sir.
Make square feet, you increase it to the second floor?
150 feet, what did you say? A what? 500?
Put a full bath up there?
Yeah.
Yes, that's the small dormer in the back of the house.
And that's really another thing of mine because my daughter's now 12. So to try and get into the bathroom now, it's like, yeah. So trying to get a shirt to the shower, you know, it's, I just stand aside, you know?
Any questions? Any questions? Andy, can you have a seat?
Thank you.
Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? First call, second call? I got a letter here from the councillor, Councilwoman, she's in favor.
Must be election seats.
All that part of the hearing closed? I got a letter here from D C W, they have no comment. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call closed? Your wife sold the house.
And what she got, the flag is...
Self-stakes, yeah, you're pretty, right?
I know.
Standing at a tree.
I'll be going in favor.
White, white.
Mr. Chairman, a man of 17-98 Gina and Richard Redd Ketti for a variance to construct dormers for additional living space in the third floor of the premise 10 Sherwood Street, make motion to break the variance.
Second?
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor? On the motion, seen and then, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or?
The law will make a motion to reject.
Appreciate it.
Seconding, second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Nice gentleman, ladies. Thank you.